I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, guys, we have told the board, but there's no need here. So, uh, we'll close up the form, thank you. Uh, moving on to this agenda, we have a presentation about our wastewater treatment improvement feasibility study.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, quickly introduce the item tonight before turning it over to Director Morrell and his team. Uh, tonight, uh, we'd like to go over with you in a workshop setting, a report we've been working on since spring regarding our wastewater treatment facility. Um, as we've planned out through capital improvement program the last couple of years, there have been some, um, state mandates regarding phosphorus treatment and other sorts of things that are involved in the business operations of our wastewater plant. That, uh, we've been learning more about as we go through various permit processes, et cetera. And, uh, why I say that is because, as you would expect, uh, changing regulations sometimes can impact how we treat, uh, our wastewater as well as what it costs to do so. Tonight's, uh, presentation is primarily focused on our own issues at Cary and some future, uh, capital improvement, uh, commitments that we may need to consider making for our current plan, for our current service model. Uh, but as part of this, uh, process, Strand Associates helped us look at a higher level, our capacity, uh, any excess capacity, how it might, uh, be important to retain our capacity for possible future economic development. Or potentially if there's, uh, capacity to look at serving other communities. Uh, so really our objective tonight is part A, which is the commitments from a capital standpoint for Cary. But we wanted to touch on the part B aspect, which is, uh, the capacity issue and talk about it and get it in front of you so you can ask questions and we can continue, uh, feedback as we complete this study over the course of the next couple of months. So I want to turn it over to Eric and, uh, his team to, uh, lead you through your presentation.
Hey, Chris. As Chris mentioned, we've, uh, engaged Strand Associates for assistance in the technical preparation of the feasibility study. So through this process, Mike, uh, from Strand along with, uh, Jane Carlson from, uh, Strand as well, they've been working with staff, which has been primarily myself, Assistant Director Mike Walsh, and our Chief Operator, John Stey. As Chris mentioned, the basic feasibility, the scope of services for the feasibility study has, uh, multiple details of which Mike will go through in his part of the presentation. But it does surround over primarily four different areas here. The capacity analysis, which is kind of the backbone of kind of what we have available to us and where it will be for the future to see at what point we need to provide expansions or if we need to provide expansion. The phosphorus removal alternative analysis, so this is the part of the process that, that evaluates what our choices are to meet the EPA's requirements for the new phosphorus limit. Uh, equipment assessment is also part of the process in doing a major project like the phosphorus project, it's a good time to evaluate our condition of our facilities and see if there's any other needs that need to be made concurrently. Uh, because like many other complex systems, they're not always independent and they will have bearings in other processes and other requirements we might have in the future. And then lastly, the regional, the utilization concept, we're focused on, uh, is it feasible, if possible, and what are the general parameters and factors involved in taking that decision for both Cary and for the Fox River Grove. Mike, we're going into more detail, but this is a kind of, like, a very concise summary of the basic, uh, trigger points of our EPA program. Uh, right now, we're near the end of November, we do have our final feasibility study due to be EPA at the end of April of next year. So we're, I'd say probably about three quarters of the way to have the draft of this, this phase of the process. Uh, at that point, we would then be charged with developing our specification of plans and completing construction by the end of October 2017. And then, uh, through the testing evaluation of that process and that improvement, uh, we need to meet that one milligram per liter limit for phosphorus by, uh, end of April of 2018. With that, I'll turn it over to Mike to go through the summary of the actual study itself and if you have questions along the way, uh, feel free to let us know any back points and then at the end we'll look it up for, uh, all of the policy and philosophical, uh, points that we'll want to discuss.
Right. Thank you, Eric.
Thanks, Chris.
Um, I wanted to touch on three things before we really get going. Firstly, uh, I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity to speak in front of you tonight and also for putting your trust in Strand and giving us the opportunity to help you, um, with this wastewater feasibility study. I know there's a lot of other Cary companies we've gone with and for you guys to put your trust in us, we really appreciate the opportunity to, to help you guys out. Secondly, I want to stress that we're gonna, I'm gonna be showing you some costs towards the end of the presentation here. I want to stress that they're preliminary at this point, both in the, uh, scope of the potential alternatives that we've looked at and also the costs themselves are still preliminary. Um, there's always a chance for fine tuning as they go forward, uh, finishing up the study. And we intentionally make them conservative so that it's more, you know, as you get to be closer to, like, design and construction, we'll dial those costs in a little bit more. So that you can expect these costs to be in the ballpark, but they're gonna be a little bit on the conservative side. And then thirdly, I tried to make this presentation as, uh, as simplified as possible just because I know that everybody has a technical background. Um, so if anybody gets lost along the way, please feel free to stop me, ask questions. This is for your benefit, so I'd like it to be, uh, back and forth if it needs to be. If you have questions, you know, just stop me as we go forward, so. With that, I want to get started, let that cool with everybody. Um, so this is our, uh, our update on the wastewater feasibility study is, uh, Eric, Chris, I'm, uh, it's Mike. I'm a professional engineer in Illinois, uh, I work under our Joliet office, uh, with Strand Associates. Worked in Strand for seven years since I got out of college. I put a pile of business cards on the table if anybody wants to take it. If you ever have any questions or someone pops up in your head tonight after we're done with the presentation, feel free to contact me, uh, either by phone or email, um, so. Kind of an outline of the presentation, um, I want to give you guys a little bit of historical background, just kind of can see how we got to this point, um, both from a, a watershed perspective and a village area perspective. Um, I want to talk about, uh, your current permit requirements and then also part of what we were asked to do was kind of try and look in our crystal ball and try and figure out where we think permit requirements are gonna go. Because obviously this is a planning document that we're gonna be creating over the next 20 years, so we want to try to be able to plan for the future as we're meeting your current needs. Um, I'll talk about the actual wastewater feasibility study, uh, some of the, uh, immediate requirements that you guys wanted to implement in order to meet the phosphorus limit and upgrade some of the, um, equipment that you guys have on site that we were able to identify and possibly could go nicely with, with phosphorus upgrades. And then also I want to talk about, uh, some of the future requirements that are gonna be required at the treatment plant in order to get some of these upcoming regulations that we, we are pretty confident are gonna come in the morning.
Do you have a portion in here where you talk about why we're removing the phosphorus hazards across, yes?
Okay. Um, and then I want to touch on the regionalization, uh, both the potential impacts of the wastewater treatment fund in terms of the excess capacity that you guys do currently have. And then also kind of the preliminary financial impacts of regional, regionalization, both as it relates to Cary, but also how we foresee it possibly relating to Fox River Grove. Because obviously if it's not attractive to both of you guys, they're not gonna want to play ball. So we kind of took a stab at trying to figure out how that would look for both Cary and Fox River. And then I'm gonna end the presentation with this kind of like, uh, trying to keep it succinct, four or five bullet points of, alright, what do I want you guys to take away from the presentation when we're at and where we're going.
For the, uh, for the, when you talk about the regionalization, did you take into account Fox River Grove's current facilities or did you take a look at what is coming down the pipe for them?
Yes. So what we did is we, we know, we took a tour of their plant as part of this project, so we kind of know what they're dealing with right now. They're gonna be dealing with the exact same regulations that you guys are. Um, some of the processes they have at Fox River Grove are not as adaptable as your guys' are.
Yeah.
So they will need a new treatment plant, um, that's pretty much a certainty. And so we take, we factor that in as far as the regionalization discussion goes.
Okay.
Yep. Alright. This is kind of, you know, Eric wrote most of this stuff, I'm probably not gonna discuss it much longer, so you guys can read it if you want, you have a part of it, you know, selecting us, you kind of idea what the scope of the project is. Uh, but I do want to, um, bring you up to attention to the condition assessment of the current equipment. Um, because I do, we do have present some options for Cary in terms of upgrading some equipment that is used, has reached the end of their useful life. I mean, in general, Cary's wastewater treatment plant is an excellent share, I mean, that is one of the things wastewater treatment plants I've ever been to. And so Mike and his guys do an awesome job running that place. But there are, um, some, uh, piece of equipment that we weren't touched as part of the 2005 upgrades that could probably use some revamping if we're gonna be doing work at the plant. Would probably make sense to upgrade some of those pieces of equipment, um, at the same time, so pretty good foresight by Mike and his guys and identifying some of that stuff, so. Um, with that, I don't mind if everybody has a good idea what the scope of the project is and everything like that. Alright, so I kind of want to touch, this is part of the project background. Um, the reason why this project is required is because the Fox River Basin has some water quality problems that most everybody is probably aware about. But in case you aren't, high nutrients create an excessive algae issue on the Fox River. And as a result of high algae, you get low dissolved oxygen. When you have over dissolved oxygen, it can't support aquatic life, you can't have fish, you can't have the invertebrates and the fish feed on it in order to sustain a good, healthy ecosystem. So as a result, um, of nutrients, I, I should also mention, I have an area of modifications. The fact that Fox River's been dammed up so many times does not help the issue, uh, when you have still water and a slow-moving stream that adds to the ability for algae to grow. And so as a result of some of these impairments, these algae and low dissolved oxygen impairments, um, the Fox River has actually been put on the 303D list, it's listed as impaired. Now, what that 303D list is, it is a list that is put out every two years by the I E P A. I E P A is constantly, um, reviewing water quality data throughout the state and they are identifying what bodies of water in the state are not meeting their intended uses. Um, the Fox River is a, is a, uh, general use stream, meaning it's used for primary contact even for swimming. It's used for, it's an aquatic life habitat, so it needs to be able to meet aquatic life standards. Um, it's also used for drinking water for the city of Aurora, and so anyone upstream of Aurora, if there's impairments that would affect their ability to, to produce clean water for their residents, that could impair the river as well. So, um, in 2001, I E P A flagged the Fox River, um, to do a, it's called the Total Maximum Daily Load Study. And basically what they do is they identify, alright, why is the Fox River impaired, what's impairing it? And then what they do is they go and they look at all the different wastewater treatment plants along the Fox River and they say, well, wastewater treatment plants, alright, in order to try and get this river back into where it needs to go, we're gonna limit how much of these particular contaminant you guys are allowed to put out in the river. Um, that can be extremely restrictive, mostly because it really picks on the point sources of the wastewater treatment plants. Because the reason, you know, you can regulate a wastewater treatment plant because we've got a permit that says this is what we can discharge. But, um, the issues on the Fox River go well beyond the wastewater treatment plants. And again, Cary is a very small percentage of, of a bigger percentage of a percentage of what's going on, so. And most people don't realize that the Fox River actually, over half of the Fox River watershed is actually up in Wisconsin. So a lot of the issues are coming from the state of Wisconsin, down through the state of Illinois until it get discharged into the, uh, Illinois River. When you look at the, um, dissolved oxygen problem and the nutrient problem, there, there's basically three sources of it. There's your point sources, which is the wastewater treatment plants essentially. Um, that contributes about 45% of the phosphorus load and, you know, Cary is one of, I want to say between the, the Chain of Lakes and, uh, where discharged is the, to Illinois River. Something like 11 or 12 wastewater treatment plants and Cary is one of the, um, medium to smaller ones, really large ones, Fox River Water Reckon Mason District, Fox Metro, to the biggest in the state, um, that also, you know, contributed to this. Um, the second source is, um, agricultural non-point source, so basically you've got folks that fertilize their lawn, you've got farmers that fertilize their fields, you know, spread manure. When it rains, some of that excess nutrients isn't getting taken up by the soil, doesn't get taken up by the plants, ends up in the Fox River. And then the third portion, that's about 50% of, of the nutrient load. And then the third portion, about 5% of, is from your MS4s, which is municipal storm sewer systems, your storm sewers basically. So, uh, as folks are roaming their grass and they get their grass clippings on the street, it rains, the grass clippings get down to the storm sewer and up on the river. So some, so from urban runoff is kind of the third source. That represents about 5% of, of the nutrient load to the river. So, back to my original point, I E P A came in, they said, hey, we see an issue, we want to correct it, we want to do this study, we're gonna tell you guys, basically based on this study, we're gonna limit you to a certain amount of discharge to the Fox River. And some of the wastewater treatment plants were like, well, hold on, we only contribute a portion of the issue, but you're gonna put all the liability on us and probably restrictions on us when you do a T M D L, Total Maximum Daily Load Study. And so what they decided to do is they decided to eat together with the environmental groups, Sierra Club mainly, and they formed the Fox River Study Group. And so basically the Fox River Study Group wanted to do is, alright, let's look at the actual biology of the stream, let's look at the actual chemistry of the stream, let's develop some hy, uh, some hydraulic models, some water quality models. And let's see if we can try to understand how phosphorus interacts with the water column throughout the river between the Chain of Lakes and through Yorkville. And see if we can come up with, um, a more holistic solution at achieving, uh, addressing the nutrient problem on the Fox River. And so they wanted to look at not only wastewater treatment plants, um, but also they wanted to look at what can we do, how can we work with the farmers to try and reduce runoff off farming fields? How can we work with the, um, different villages that have storm sewer systems to try and work with them to see if there's any, you know, changes that can be made to urban runoff, things like that. And so the Fox River Study Group was established as an alternative to the Total Maximum Daily Load, um, study. And so it's been 13, 14 years now in the making and finally, uh, the end of next month, the Fox River Study Group is gonna put out their Fox River implementation plan. Um, and that kind of, the purpose of that document is to present the plan to try and get the river back to compliance and it addresses all three of the different sources of nutrients.
So does the I E P A have to opine on that since they were at the?
So I E P A is actually, has a seat on the board of Fox River Study Groups, so they've been involved. And, uh, they are going to be reviewing the document as an entire organization, uh, once again submitted at the end of December 31st is the submission date. So they're gonna look at it, they'll give it their approval, most likely, um, but then they're gonna have to meet with the U S E P A. Um, they've got a planned meeting end of January, meeting in the February 2016 to talk to the federal government, the federal E P A about it. And, um, that'll be kind of the last hurdle to make sure that this is, that the plan gets approved, so.
But second, it's important to note that U S E P A and the Illinois E P A are always in agreement in, in all of the issues that come before them. So the Illinois E P A is, is taking a major role in the, the Fox River Study. Um, and they're very much in support of the process. Um, not too sure that the U S E P A is totally on board yet, they're waiting to see.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see how the U S E P A reacts to the Fox River implementation, but, plan, I've seen it. Um, it, their modeling, the modeling that they did, that the Fox River Study Group did, did not tell the story that they were hoping to see. They were hoping to see kind of a black and white and like everything else in this world, but it ended up being gray. So, um, some of the recommended, you know, part of the recommendation of the plan is to do, collect more data, do some more modeling. And so, um, how that impacts the wastewater treatment plants is yet to really be seen, it's gonna be more in the future when you guys are able to get ratcheted down. Before I jump into that, at the same time, yeah, kind of separate from the Fox River Study Group, the state of Illinois put together a, a document called the Illinois Nutrient Loss Reduction Strategy. And this is a, a result of approximately, I guess 1998 was about when it first kind of started. Most people have heard about the Gulf of Mexico Hypoxia Zone. Um, if you haven't, basically all the nutrients that, uh, run off into the Mississippi River dump out in the Gulf of Mexico, all those nutrients create low dissolved oxygen out in the Gulf of Mexico. You basically have a 5,000 square mile dead zone where just nothing can live because there's just not enough oxygen. And so the U C P A kind of had a big, uh, meeting on 1998, they charged each of the states that are tributary to the Mississippi River. Alright, you guys need to come up with a plan in your state to try and reduce the amount of nutrients that are coming to the Mississippi River. It took Illinois 15 years to do that, but they found it in there. Um, they're not surprising to most people, they're the last ones to get theirs done. But as part of the Nutrient Loss Reduction Strategy, um, it requires all major wastewater treatment facilities, um, eventually to get down to, to start off with a 1.0 milligram per liter total phosphorus limit, which is what you guys are seeing in your permit. So between the Fox River Study Group and Illinois Nutrient Losses, uh, Reduction Strategy, that is kind of the, the source of the current, uh, effluent limit that you guys now have near I E P A's permit. And as we proceed, kind of last bullet point, that's kind of one of the first steps is to kind of ratchet down phosphorus on, on the states, on the wastewater treatment plants of the states. Any questions before I move on, if that makes sense?
One thing, Joe, our compliance schedule, which has our final report being submitted to the I E P A at the end of April next year, uh, that does, is after the U S E P A meeting. So there's still some time in our, in our schedule, even in our current compliance timeline to make any adjustments should there not be agreement between the two agencies. But obviously until that occurs, we'll, we'll proceed on what we, our, our analysis of the best case scenario as we register this far.
So are we compliant now with the, whatever?
So, so right now you guys are compliant, um, in the sense that your permit limit doesn't start until end of February, or I'm sorry, end of April 2018 is when you have to meet your permit limit. So right now you are not meeting 1, a 1.0 total phosphorus limit, but you're not in violation of your permit because you have until that date to have, to start making your, your limit. And so the fact that you guys have a new permit limit that you need to meet here in the future is kind of the whole reason why you brought Strand on, on board, is to try and come up with different, um, alternatives to let you guys pick from to be able to meet that 1.0.
So is the, is the 18, 2018 date for all of the communities?
Uh, I would say 90% of the communities have that compliance date. Um, it's not so much that specific date, it's the, it's a four and a half year compliance schedule. So everybody's permits renewed a little bit different set of time, they're all generally within the same, you know, within a few months of each other. So Cary's permit became effective October 14th, or top, October 31st, 2014. So the 2018 date, I'm getting my years mixed up, but four and a half years after that, so I think it's actually 2018 now that I'm thinking about it, but it's a four and a half year compliance date. The only wastewater treatment plant that I know on the Fox River that, um, was able to negotiate a longer compliance schedule is Fox Metro. And that's just because they're such a large facility and they're, they're on the, they're on the order of tens of millions of dollars to be able to, to be able to meet that limit, just because of how big they are and how constrained their site is.
Are there communities that have to meet this quite now, yes, and are they doing it?
Yes. There's communities that have had to meet that limit for 10 years on it? Yeah, so, so Illinois kind of, in light of the meeting with U C P A and the Gulf of Hypoxia, one of their kind of quick, quick reactions was they changed the rules that basically any wastewater treatment plant that was over 1 million gallon, uh, 1 million gallons per day, um, that was upgrading their plant, had to meet a 1.0 milligram per liter. Um, on top of that, anybody who discharged to Lake Michigan, which there's not very many, have had to meet some pretty low phosphorus limits for a while. So some of those, so there's not many, but there are, there are a few that have upgraded in the last, you know, decade that have had to meet, um, meet the 1.0 milligram per liter. And when I say upgrade, um, I'm talking, uh, increase their flows, basically, not just touching their plant.
What is our level now, Joe?
I'm sorry?
What is our level now?
So right now you guys are, uh, basing your F1 data, your average annual 3 milligrams per liter.
In other plants, in other states like Wisconsin in particular, they've been, uh, ratcheting down phosphorus limits, uh, before, so we're, we're not trading, uh, new territory here. We're able to rely on technologies and experience and, uh, and professionals like Strand that have done other plants and done this process before, so that we, we do benefit from others' experience.
Right, and that's, that's probably the reason why, um, we're in a unique position with our main office being in Madison. We've got a lot of phosphorus removal experience because Wisconsin has had phosphorus limits for 20 years now. Um, regulations tend to work from the coasts in, and Wisconsin for whatever reason, um, tends to be a little bit more progressive than some of the other mid, uh, midwestern states. Um, so there are plants, there's a particular plant in Fond du Lac, Wisconsin, that can meet a 0.04 limit. 25 times longer than your guys', so. I mean, there, there's some ridiculous, we've got, there's permits on the collateral that gotta get down to 0.2, 0.3. So this is not new by any means, it's new for the state of Illinois, but not, not new in general.
But with, with that point where you said, you know, it's so much and it's ridiculous, but can you now talk about the hazards of phosphorus? Not just about the, the dead air, but about the physical and health problems?
Um, I guess what you, what do you mean by that, as far as to humans?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know that there's, I'm not aware of there being too many physical problems to humans. This is more being driven by the detrimental effects it has on ecosystems more than it is to humans.
It was only two months ago that a, a major city in New York had their water system shut down because of, uh, high phosphorus. And their residents, yeah, so, but that's already, I mean, I know we're talking about the I E P A and then also you mentioned, you know, a lot of the countrywide stats, I mean, yeah, they've had their regulations in place for 20 years.
They have, um, they've had the, the 1.0 kind of levels, now they're just starting to get down to the lower level, level, levels now. Um, but again, it's, the wastewater treatment plants are just a small percentage of it, so they're, they're trying to get more, um, agriculture on board, more. And actually surprising, I was at a I W A meeting, um, Friday this past week, and, um, they had talked about how the, how things were going with Illinois Nutrient Loss Reduction Strategy. And they were actually surprised at how cooperative the farmers have been, at least in mid-state Illinois, and how, um, progressive they are and how seriously they're taking it, so. They were pleasantly surprised by how much action the farmers are willing to take without being, I mean, when it comes down to it, nobody's forced, nobody can force the farmers to do anything. Uh, there are no laws that require the, the farmers to, to reduce nutrients out to, out to, I mean, they're nothing really governing it, so it's completely voluntary, but they're, they've been pleasantly surprised by how cooperative they've been. Alright, so I'm gonna talk about, uh, the Village Cary wastewater treatment plant. Uh, as we talked about, it discharges the Fox River, uh, the treatment plant's about a mile away from the Fox, so we've got a pretty long F1 flight from the Fox, uh, from the treatment plant down to the Fox. Um, I want to talk about the second bullet, bullet point, so, um, the Cary wastewater treatment plant is their, F1 is regulated by what's called N P D S permit, National Pollution, uh, Discharge Elimination System. Uh, this was a, a pro-her that was developed as part of Clean Water Act in 1970. Um, as you all probably know, it is illegal to pollute, you know, you know, in the U S, you know, you and I can't just go out and dump a barrel of oil into the river, you know, we'd get arrested. Cary is allowed to pollute within a reason, the river, because they have an N P S permit that gives them, that allows them to discharge pollutants into the Fox River, but it sets limits that they need to make. And, um, based on the F1 limits or F1 data that Mike and, and Eric have shown us, the F1 from Cary's wastewater treatment plant is by far cleaner than the Fox River already is, so. I will, Cary's wastewater treatment plant is actually helping the problem when it comes to, to, to your biological stuff and, and your turbidity, so, um, they're doing a great job running, running the plant up there, so. Some of the main processes, um, the, this right here is the headworks to the facility. Uh, flow comes in, it goes through what's called a commuter, basically a grinder grinds up all the paper and whatever else that comes into that form, makes it nice and small so it can get, uh, easily settled out later on in the process. Uh, followed by a grid tank, you know, a grid tank that basically settles out your bigger rocks, your sand, things like that to protect downstream pumps and equipment and things like that. It's followed by two primary clarifiers, uh, that's basically just a, a gravity process, gravity just pulls the heavy stuff down. And so you get about, um, 55% of your solids. And so you get about, um, 55% of your solids fall out of the primary clarifiers and about 30% of your, what's called your B O D, your biochemical oxygen demand, that's the organic material, is pulled out from the primary clarifiers. Since the flow all comes into the plant by gravity, I say with quotes because there's pump stations in town that lift it up or flows by gravity. They do have intermediate pumping station that allows it to flow by gravity from this point onwards. So this right here is a pumping station that lifts the water up so it can flow by gravity. These three tanks, along with these two tanks, are your biological process and your activities and lunch process. That's where you got your naturally occurring bacteria break down the organic material. And then these four covered tanks here are the final clarifiers. So once you get those bacteria fill themselves up on, on the nasty stuff in the wastewater, they kind of huddle together, group together, and allows them to settle out by gravity. And then from there, it goes, flows by gravity through this structure here, which is your final F1 metering, and then that's where you also get chlorine dosed to, to kill any bacteria that's left over, and then it flows by gravity out to the river. And then by the river, you guys have a dechlorination facility that basically reduces the amount of chlorine so it can kill the river when it, when it comes out.
Was already, was already discussions, maybe even back when you were at school about it, about the trend in America of going to the antibacterial soaps and things about having an effect on the water treatment?
You know, that's a good question, to be honest with you. That's not, that's not something that I really have heard too much about. There's some other things that are becoming more and more, um, talked about, things like hormones in period care products and the fact that it basically goes right through the treatment plant and out to the river and it's having some bad effects in the northwestern thing like that, same in populations and males turning into females, things like that. But as far as antibacterial, antibacterial soap, I don't, I've not heard much about it. I would say it's probably by far diluted enough that it wouldn't cause any problems in the treatment plant or anything like that.
Just one question?
Yep, that's a good question, though. Some of the other facilities on site are, are your, are your sludge treatment processes. So basically all the solids you pull out, you gotta treat them before you can dispose of them. So sludge taken out of the primary clarifiers and sludge taken out of the final clarifiers actually come to this structure here where it is thickened up a little bit. And then from there it goes out to the digesters where it actually breaks down further into a more stable product. And then these are sludge drying beds where it kind of dries out, gets, gets a lot, a lot, well, obviously drier. But obviously the drier it is, the less amount there is, the cheaper your holding costs, things like that. So the key is to get your sludge as dry as possible before all of them on site because less trucks is less money for you guys. Any questions on how the treatment plant works? We'll come back to a slide similar to this when I talk about some of the impacts of regionalization and those trees. So as far as the current N P S permit requirements, your treatment plant is rated for 2.8 million gallons per day on a daily average flow basis. But the, when they peak hourly flow, it's 7.0 million gallons per day. Basically, you know, when it rains, sometimes your flows go up because the, you know, the most sewer is completely, you know, is completely watertight. And so they give you the ability to, to allow a little bit additional weather flow into the plant. Currently, you guys are seeing about 1.4 million gallons per day at the plant, so it's about half capacity, which is nice in the fact that it allows you guys to get really, really good treatment and you guys have excellent numbers. But the downside to it is that you guys have some excess capacity that you paid money for. So, a little bit strange on this next bullet point. Normally N P S permits are five-year permits, but the, as part of the Fox River Grove, or I'm sorry, the Fox River Study Group negotiations, they actually got it down to a three-year permit. And the reason why they did that is so that it would give time for the Fox River Limitation Plan to be put out. And then based on what the plan said, give you a new permit that would be able to implement any recommendations that the plan might have, whether it be lower total phosphorus limits or whatever it would be. So that's probably the reason why they happen to be a three-year permit. So 2017 is when the permit will be, will be expired. Normally, these permit renewals usually take a little bit of time, so it's not like on October 31st, 2017, you have a new permit. It's not gonna be like that. They'll probably start looking at it then, you might see it in the next year. That's typically how it goes. You guys have an F1 permit or an F1 limit for suspended solids. That's basically how clear the water is, so it has a number that you guys have to meet on a daily, on a daily basis and also on a monthly average basis. I talked about a lot of chemical oxygen demand, B O D, that's the organics in the wastewater that are, that pollute the water. So you guys have the limits that you need to meet from that perspective. Faecal coliform bacteria, that is, that's an indicative organism. Basically, if you find faecal coliform, that usually means that you're gonna have some other type of bacteria that could be harmful to humans. And so that's why you guys have to chlorinate, dechlorinate in the summertime to try and reduce the amount of bacteria that will put down in the river for folks that are swimming downstream. Ammonia nitrogen, limits those change based on season. Ammonia nitrogen is toxic to certain invertebrates in river systems. And so they've got water quality standards and ethyl limits to be able to, you know, prevent those from being detrimental to ecosystem. Dissolved oxygen, you guys need to have a certain amount of dissolved oxygen in your F1s to try not to contribute to the D O problems on the Fox River. And the big one that I've got here highlighted, this is the new one. I should say, I should preface this, that these limits, you guys have had your permit for, at least the suspended solids, B O D and faecal have been in your permit for multiple permit rounds. Ammonia is fairly new, but you guys have dealt with it for a couple permit cycles, I would imagine, and same with D O is fairly new. But total phosphorus is the new one for this particular permit that you guys have. You now have to meet the 1.0 milligram per liter. But it's part of another kind of requirement of the N P S permit, especially in addition. The requirement of this feasibility study, they are also required, require the village to look at what it would take to get down to 1.5 milligram per liter limit. So we included that in our, in our studies in part. Any questions on that? So again, here's the compliance schedule. I was right, it was 2018. But basically your, your permit became effective on October 31st, 2014. One of the requirements of your permit is to participate in the Fox River Study Group. That was to happen immediately. You guys have been participating, you've been sharing data. There may be a renewed push to have you guys participate financially, but it's not a huge financial commitment. It'll end up being some like $20,000 a year, something like that. But it'll help fund their additional data collection and modeling and things like that. The Village of Kerry has to submit the Fox River Limitation Plan by October 31st at the end of this year. Fox River Study Group actually had a meeting today. I wasn't able to attend it, but it's my understanding that they've got the draft basically done. They received a bunch of comments through some, between sometime around October. They have addressed them all, and they're on, on pace to have the final draft done by the end of December. And all that Village of Kerry needs to do is submit an email with a link to where it's sent on the website. So that's an easy one for, for the village to satisfy. Phosphorus removal study, that's, we're doing that as part of the wastewater feasibility study, as, as we've been saying. There are two interim reports that were due to kind of update the I E P A on progress of that feasibility study. You guys have submitted both of your interim reports already, so we're good on that. Final supplemental is April 30th of the next year. And then the 1.0 milligram per liter total phosphorus limit on an annual average basis. Plans and specs are due by the end of October 2017. I made a mistake.
It's a quick day there.
Yeah. Plans and specs will leave our 2016, exchange a year for, for construction. And then meet the, the limit on April 30th, 2018.
Just checking to make sure you're made in.
Just a point to note there, and the reason that the schedule is laid out in that four and a half year increment is because typically you get, issues permits for five years. So that they'd like to see six months worth of data from the active plant before they reissue your next permit.
Yeah, and the fact that, that Kerry has a three-year permit and a four and a half year compliance schedule is kind of odd because you're complying with something in a permit that's already gonna be expired. But to be honest with you, that's actually pretty common. In Wisconsin, where they had some of those low limits, they had some pretty long compliance schedules, eight, nine, 10 years, just because it takes a lot of effort to keep down these little rules. So that's actually not that odd. It's just kind of weird how you're having to follow a permit that's gonna say expired right then and again. Okay, so as I said, part of our requirement for the study was to try and foresee and predict what additional future N P S permit requirements are gonna be out there. Uh, one for sure that I know is gonna happen, I would bet everything that I own on it just because the federal government's already passed their version of it and the Illinois State of Illinois has three years to adopt it, and that's some updated pharaomonia standards. Basically, they looked at some more data, found some new invertebrates that were adversely affected by ammonium nitrogen that they hadn't considered previously, and they realized that the lower limits were affecting these particular invertebrates, their type of mouth. But basically as a result, you, the ammonia limits that the Village of Kerry's gonna have to meet, either the next permit or the permit after that, is gonna be some more stringent ammonia limits. That's not too concerning right now because of how much excess, excess capacity that the village has, but it will come into play if you guys do decide to regionalize with Fox River Grove. Then that plays, because the only way to really treat ammonia is have longer contact time in the active sludge process. And so you just basically have to have air tanks. So they have other technologies to increase capacity, but that's a little bit above what we need to talk about here.
And is it coming from ammonium nitrate?
Yes.
Again, the farmers that have any regulations.
That's part of it, yeah.
And then the nitrogen sources.
I mean, ammonia is the main ingredient in your area, so, in, in urine as well, so. It's coming from both sources. Updated bacteria regulations, I don't perceive this being too much of an issue for the village going forward. They've kind of adopted a new testing standard as far as getting away from faecal coliform according to E Coli. Shouldn't really affect how the village has to operate their plant, so I'm not too worried about that. There's always gonna be the, the potential for more stringent total phosphorus limits. Like I said, the draft of the Fox River Implementation Plan, right now basically just says, you know, we want each treatment plant to, to meet the 1.0 milligram per liter as required by the state reduction strategy. And then we need to do some more modeling to see, you know, so we can better predict what's gonna happen in the river. If we ever do, you know, restrictive limits going forward, we wanna be able to know what kind of impact that's gonna have. So the preliminary schedule of the Fox River Implementation Plan says that they're gonna update the plan every five years. So they're gonna collect more data, do some more modeling, take a look after five years, and then possibly incorporate lower limits. If it's warranted, if the science, if it's scientifically based warrant, if it's warranted, then they'll think about, well, you know, recommend possibly more stringent limits. But you're not looking at more stringent limits for at least 10 years, I would say, I think it's pretty safe to say, unless this meeting with U S E P A just completely goes off the rails and they say no. But since they approved the state's nutrient reduction strategy of 1.0 milligram per liter, it's gonna be hard for them to look at the Fox River Study Group and say, now we have to do more. I, I don't foresee that being the case, so. I think it's pretty safe to say that, you know, more stringent total phosphorus limits is a little bit down the road still always.
Are those limits set by the, the U S E P A, are they the same across the United States? Why?
Um, the, so the way it works is, how do I say this? The U S E P A will set the, the requirements for water quality standards, what each river needs to be, you know, the limit that the river needs to meet in the river, but they leave it up to the states on how to achieve that limit. And so each state has its own way of really figuring out what type of ethyl limits they want or need. Part of Illinois's nutrient reduction strategy is to come up with a state-specific water quality standard and an American limit. So, so right now, all that the Illinois state regulation says is that you have to get rid of offensive conditions, you have to get rid of, you know, lots of algae, and it doesn't put an actual number. There's no number that needs to be vetted in the state of Illinois, right now as far as level of the river. And so it's kind of hard to pick a limit based on that information. So each state is basically up to their own way of how they wanna calculate those ethyl limits, I guess is the best way I can put it.
Well, different waterways also have, have different issues. So you've got a west, you've got a region, you've got the area. Up in the northwest, you have arsenic, you know, so they'll all be addressing, you know, the ones that are affecting their biodiversity.
And then I would say probably in 20 years or so, you're gonna look at total nitrogen. That's gonna be kind of the next pollutant of the day, once they get phosphorus under control. But I would say, as of right now, the nice thing about a future more nitrogen limit is a lot of B P R processes, biological phosphorus removal processes, also are low total nitrogen. So depending on what route we go as far as phosphorus removal, we could get some total nitrogen removed. Any questions on that?
Before we go to the next section, I think we'll, maybe time for a five-minute break, and then after you have questions, then we'll hit the next big chunk for you.
Okay, um, everyone's ready, I will move on. This is kind of where we start talking about, about some of the regionalization stuff. I've basically put together a graph to try and visually show everyone kind of where the village is at in terms of current flows, where we projected future flow to go. I spent some time with Brian Simmons, your guys' community development guy, and we're able to come to agreement on what we perceive as far as population growth, the potential population growth in Kerry. We were a little bit conservative on, on some of the outside land, possibly getting them to move the village and things like that. But basically what I'm showing in the light blue, Kerry's current capacity, like I said, it's right around 1.4 million gallons per day M G D. So if I accidentally say M G D, I mean, million gallons per day, I'll try not to. Fox River Grove is just over 1 million gallons per day currently. So total, if, if you got, if you all were to regionalize today, it'd be a combined flow around 2.5, you know, 2.4, 2.42, something like that. And then in black here is what I'm showing is the current capacity of the village's wastewater treatment plant, which is 2.8. So if the village were to regionalize with Fox River Grove, there is capacity available to do so. In the dark blue, I'm showing what we, what we predict as future development and future flows, both for Village of Kerry and the Village of Fox River Grove. We project flows to get up to 2.15 million gallons per day in Kerry. Fox River Grove closer to 1.2, 1.25. But as you can see in the dark blue, once we look at the future build-out conditions of Kerry and Fox River Grove, we've exceeded your wastewater treatment plant capacity. As a result, that means a wastewater treatment plant upgrade will be required in the future if you guys wanted to do choice. Just so everybody's aware, the time period is 20 years, so these are 2036 flows, basically. I think that's probably all that I wanted to show.
Are we using their current capacity in Fox River Grove from their current facilities? That's why I was asking, are you, as far as the, the, the new waste treatment plant, Fox River Grove, coming online in their capacity?
So this capacity is, is what they have at their treatment plant, and they have, I believe, enough spare capacity to be able to handle the future themselves, from a capacity standpoint. But there's a caveat there because that is, that's a capacity as it stands now. Once you get phosphorus in there, that, that... Once you get phosphorus in there, that, they don't have the capacity or the ability to remove phosphorus. Because when you remove phosphorus, I guess it depends on which phosphorus removal technology you go with, but it's not like it really robs you of capacity. It's just kind of a different animal itself. So while their flows will still be below the rated capacity of the treatment plant, they won't have the ability to remove phosphorus at their site. So, does that answer your question?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions on this from the graphic here? Okay. So, now we're getting into some of the dollars and cents as far as what we kind of foresee, what it would take for the village of Kerry to meet the 1.0 milligram per liter total phosphorus limit. There's essentially three things that could be done to meet, and it could be a combination of these three things, to meet a 1.0 milligram per liter. There's biological phosphorous removal. Basically, we make changes to your activated sludge process, the biological process of your plant. We add some additional tankage, or we take some of your access capacity, in this case, if we want to regionalize. We separate, kind of siphon off a portion of the activated sludge tank. And we... We basically are selecting particular organisms based on the type of environment they like to live in. So there are specific biological phosphorus, phosphorus-consuming organisms that like a certain environment. What we would do is we basically simulate that environment inside the wastewater plant. So they'll be corroded by bugs, and then they can remove phosphorus, essentially on a biological phosphorous removal works. And then they would settle out in your fountain thermers, like it normally does now. We're just picking the bugs that we want to be able to facilitate that. Chemical phosphorus removal is rather than trying to select specific bugs, we add metal salts to the wastewater treatment plant flow. And those metal salts will combine with phosphorus, silate with phosphorus, and globaling, so you get a nice flock, a nice flocculent that will settle out in your fountain thermers. And the metal salts will be absorbed by, or consumed chemically, chemistry, and then go out with sludge. And then your ethyl will be, you know, have lower phosphorus limits. And then also, all the metal salts that we added would go out with sludge because it would react with whatever's in the wastewater. So, it's not like if you use chemical phosphorus removal, we're dumping a bunch of chemicals into the Fox River by any means. The IPA is cool with chemical phosphorus removal. They are, you know, they have no problems with it. It's in the regulations. They like to see biological phosphorus removal. But the thing about bio P removal is you have to have specifically wastewater that is amenable to it, meaning it's got certain characteristics to be able to grow the specific bugs that you want. The third option, or third thing that can be done is operational changes. This can be as simple as changing the way they run certain processes in the plants. I don't want to get too technical, so I won't get into it. But there are certain things that you can get some fractional removal just to help out, kind of by changing the way that the plant gets operated. So, when I hand down to it, this table what it's showing is either biological phosphorus removal or chemical phosphorus removal, capital costs. This is your initial investment, your construction costs. I broke it down into anticipated annual operation maintenance costs. These are what you would expect each year, your operation budget to have to increase to be able to facilitate the different construction, you know, the different additional processes. And then, on the third column, I put, we put the total present worth costs. That takes into account, over the 20 years, your initial investment, all of your yearly investments and your additional operation costs. But also takes into account the fact that some equipment doesn't last 20 years. So there's some future capital costs incorporated. Discount for future inflation because obviously a dollar in 20 years is not worth a dollar as now. And then also takes into account whatever salvage value you might have from what you built now. So for example, a tank will have a useful life of 40 years. So after 20 years, there's still a dollar value associated with that tank. So, a 20-year present worth takes into account all of that stuff. And it's really the only way to compare apples to apples across different types of technologies. So we like to use that. I wanted to also point out, obviously, we've got a range of costs. We looked at four different types of biological phosphorus removal processes. And so each one has a different cost value because each one has a different complexity to it. It achieves the same goal, but there's how many different ways to... Six of one act as another. So, from a capital cost perspective, chemical phosphorus removal is significantly cheaper than bio P's. However, if you look at your annual costs, the chemical costs are expensive. So you're going to have to constantly be trucking the chemicals and you mix it in there. And so, when everything's said and done, we look at over 20 years, it's actually more expensive than some of the biological phosphorus removal alternatives that we looked at. So...
What's typically used up to the river here in the Fox River?
Um, that's a good question. Most of the folks, I don't know of anybody who's meeting a... Is anybody meeting 1.0 right now in the Fox River? You know, first off?
I guess my question is basically, what would be the standard of those two options?
Um, to meet a 1.0, it would probably be chemical phosphorus removal because it doesn't take much effort from a chemical phosphorus removal perspective to meet a 1.0. However, I will say that as a caveat, biological phosphorus removal is going to be better at reaching some of your lower levels. So, and it can be phased in over time. So, bio P, if you have a wastewater report, generally, people do go for that. The reason why other folks use CPR is chemical phosphorus removal is because their wastewater might not be amenable to biological phosphorus removal. So if their wastewater is not set up for bio P because it doesn't have the right constituents in it, you know, probably have to add some type of carbon source like ethanol or methanol or something to facilitate it. And so, we did some initial testing here in Kerry, or my guys' guys did. And right now, it looks really good that your guys' wastewater is going to be able to facilitate bio P. So, I would say both options are definitely on the table for the village of Kerry.
There's another consideration at times, Chris. Crystal Lake actually removes phosphorus, chemically. But it's a dual-purpose chemical treatment because not only do they remove phosphorus, they also have a baryon problem in their ethyl. So if the chemical treatment removes both, baryon can't be removed, the biological treatment, so even if they were to do biological phosphorus, they would still have to do chemicals. So in their case, it was logical, a logical choice because of removing both. We don't have those issues. We would, if we went that long, we would simply be treating phosphorus.
So what's the recommendation?
The recommendation right now?
Bio P?
It would probably be bio P. And we would go with the, it's called the AO process. I won't get into any detail about it, but that's the cheapest version of the bio P option.
Looking forward to the future, are you, is the 1.0 program, is that going to come down? And what would be the case?
Yeah, so I would say it will probably eventually come down. There's no telling when it will come down. But the nice thing is that bio P will be 1.5. And it'll get you on your way down to 1.1 as well. Bio P can reliably, depending on how much capacity you have at your plant, and, you know, in the future, I could see bio P getting you guys down, getting you at the village down to a 1.2. So, anytime you get down to 1.1, below 1.1, it takes some type of tertiary treatment process, regardless of what you do.
Is there any hybrid in this? Like if you went with the chemical process, because it's cheaper initially, higher operating cost?
So, that's actually a very good question. So this can be phased in. You can start with a chemical phosphorus removal system to meet your 1. If you get a lower limit to like a 1.5, when you have... Basically, the lower the limit gets, the exponentially more chemically you have to use your regional limit because there's some competing reactions that take up some of your metal salts. So there, definitely, chemical phosphorus could be a first step. Build your additional tankage, or modify your tanks to get bio P when you get to a lower number. And then you can also use chemical phosphorus removal as a polishing agent. So you can get down to, you might be able to get down to 1.5 with bio P, throw some chemical in there, and then you're able to get down to 1.2. One thing I do, I should mention, these numbers in the biological phosphorus removal row do not include, traditionally, IPAs require you to have a backup chemical system that would be significantly smaller than a full-blown chemical system. But there is, in addition, there is some capital and O&M costs associated with that. I have heard recently that they may get away from that as a way to promote bio P more because if you're going to be put in the chemical system, you know, what's the point of doing bio P? So, that's kind of their thinking. So I didn't include those costs because we don't know if they're necessarily required. I just want to throw that caveat out there that there might be some additional costs associated with chemical phosphorus removal.
I figured it's cheaper to do biological, that's what I figured. I adjusted some math. Because even if you amortize, you know, the loan, you have a 20-year loan at 3% for $1,250, let's say. I took the lease across over there. I held the 3.50 constant, and you can throw the 3.50 in. We probably paid for that, but the other thing, we might borrow money from.
IPA loan, or largest loans in the state?
I figured 3%, so it might be much lower than that.
Actually, IPA loan rates right now are 1.96.
Good, makes sense. It makes very sound, but yeah. But at 3%, you're only looking at, ever 20 years, which is the term you said, you're only looking at $83,000 PHi payments. You add on another 30, which is your top end for maintenance, and you're still less than 1.60. So, slam dunk, maybe go the other way.
And the flexibility to hit other limits should they come up with the biological process is a factor we want to consider as well.
Any other questions?
Are we able at all to talk about recovery rather than removal?
I figured that would be something that came up. The thing with phosphorus recovery is it's expensive, initial investment. It's very high, labor-intensive. So generally doesn't pay for itself until you get to some of the bigger facilities. So we started looking into it, and it became pretty apparent right off the bat that harvesting phosphorus is not, cannot be, not going to be feasible for Kerry. Especially when you take into account that you have to market the product and things like that on the board as well. It just, Kerry's just not going to be big enough to afford to pay for itself. You might see some of the bigger facilities on the Fox River look into that. The Fox Metro's and the Fox Rivers might look at it. Well, I know the Fox River's looking at it because we're helping them look at it as being a potential option, but I don't think it makes much sense for Kerry to do it.
Are there any grants for early adopters of this? Or are there any money out there, sure?
Pretty much the only money that's out there right now, it's free money, is for energy, energy grants for improving energy efficiency and things like that. As part of this project going forward, if you have to expand your ration tanks, you have to expand your giving me blower. If you get a high-efficiency blower, it could end up being paid for in part by a grant. You know, if you guys really wanted to think, if you all wanted to think outside the box and look at some type of alternative energy source on-site, you can get grants for that. For example, if you want to put solar panels on the roofs of all your buildings?
Yep.
You know, that could be paid for in part by grants. You'd have to look at the numbers to see if there's the payback that you want. Unfortunately, some of the grant programs that used to be extremely generous, both at the federal level and the state level, have dried up, especially at the state level just because of the high initial prices.
And we're facing 2.0.
Exactly, it's something like that.
That's a good slide. I'm sorry, next slide.
This is kind of what Eric was alluding to previously, and kind of what I was talking about in terms of some opportunities since we're going to be at the plant doing a construction project of upgrading some piece of equipment that had reached the end of their useful life. But also upgrading some processes and some equipment that would make Mike and John's life easier at running the actual treatment plant. For example, well, as far as some of the replacement, equipment replacement, some pumps during our walk through, we noticed were reaching the end of their useful life. So it would make sense to upgrade those while we're doing construction. And then as far as improvements to increase efficiency in the wastewater plant, the plant right now has a pretty rudimentary SCADA system. And what SCADA is, is it's a plant-wide control system that allows Mike and his operators to kind of keep the finger on the pulse of the plant, how are things working? And right now, most of what Mike and his operators have is more monitoring as opposed to actual control. So one of the, part of this cost is upgrading the SCADA system. And it's a pretty wide range as far as how much upgrading the SCADA system would cost, just because there's, you know, simpler things are less expensive. And then there's the bells and whistles that you could possibly put in there. So that's why there's the range of capital costs and O&M costs there. Just some uncertainty as far as things like that. And also, we did evaluate the dieter mixing system that is at the plant currently is subpar. And in fact, it's actually, it needs to be upgraded in order to be able to meet future capacity. And so, we looked at two different technologies for that. And so this incorporates those differences in costs. And then also, the chlorination, or the disinfection facilities at the treatment plant are, I guess you could say, non-traditional. And so we included three different ways of possibly upgrading that. So that's why you see a flux, kind of a flux in capital costs and things like that. So these are, I would say, part, at least, you know, a decent portion of this cost is things that I would say are improvements that we would strongly suggest the village should take on. Some of this is a little bit more luxury, you know, towards the higher end. But I would say right around the 3.6 million is probably around what we recommend the village really implement in terms of additional equipment replacement and things like that.
But this is all, again, for the board, this is all not limited to regionalization. This is just a standard.
So that's to maintain our present capacity levels or to improve the capacity levels?
It would maintain the present capacity level, but I think it would make operating the plant in some cases better. I don't know. Well, in some cases, for example, if we update, if we upgrade the SCADA system, part of it would be implementing some controls so they have better control over the biological process, that they might be able to get, you know, better removal as flows go up, things like that. And it'll also reduce energy costs at the plant as well by running the blowers when they're going to need to be run, or being able to turn them down if they need to be turned on, things like that. So some of it is better efficiency, not necessarily better or higher capacity, if that makes sense.
So, maybe it's in your, I'll just ask. Did you do any calculations? I mean, obviously, there's economies of scale. If you increase capacity at 10, or 20, or 30% from where we are now, the costs are not going to go up 10, or 20, or 30%. So, how, you know, within reason, if you were to increase capacity, let's say, 25%, you have a ballpark of what that does to all these figures? Or is that something that's difficult, is that difficult to calculate, is it?
It's not super difficult to calculate. I would say, once I get to my regionalization cost slide, we take some of that into account.
Oh, okay.
So, I want to say that I'm going to answer that question in the future here.
Okay.
If not, I could probably give you some better numbers from that perspective. Any questions on this, from your group? No. Okay. Looking further out in the future, future limits, if there's no regionalization, Kerry has enough spare capacity at the treatment plant to be able to meet future ammonia limits, which is very important. If there's ever a need to meet more stringent limits, part of this study, Eric and Mike asked us to look at meeting, potentially meeting a 1.1 in the future, total phosphorus limit. That's kind of what I'm showing here. Obviously, it gets much more expensive as you get down to lower numbers. So, again, it's set at 1.1. And that's an incremental cost. That's assuming that you already influence some type of technology to get down to a 1. So it's an incremental cost to get down to a 1. But the thing that I really want to stress, two things, I guess, from this slide. Number one, the fact that your plant is... Number one, the fact that your plant is, is big enough to be able to meet future ammonia requirements, that's a big deal. That doesn't, that means that you do not have to upgrade your plant, increase your capacity to be able to meet the future limits that you guys are going to face from an ammonia perspective. I also want to stress that all these improvements can be phased in over time, whether you do chemical, then bio P, or if we do bio P and then you further make adjustments to your bio P to be able to get total nitrogen removal in the future, it's all pretty flexible and all be phased in over time.
Do you know how much money that, the communities that are harvesting the phosphorus rather than removing it, do you know how much money they make?
I do not. I'll get that information if you want to send me an email.
They, they sell it to the farmers and, but it, it's, it's a discussion for another night, I can see. Honestly, it's okay, we'll get back to what he said earlier, that it's not very.
Basically, what they do is they pull out the phosphor to become, it's a pellet, and it's a spreadable fertilizer, basically, that you can market to local people that are farmers. Now, in answering to, to the farmer situation, all the sludge that is produced by the Village of Cary wastewater treatment, treatment plant is already going to farmers. You basically just pay a trucking company to come out, collect it, and they put it out on our business, and so it's being used to benefit farmers already. You're just not making a profit off of it by selling, selling to the farmers, you're basically giving it to the farmers, they're disposing of it for you rather than you paying tipping fees at a land, at a landfill.
So we need to get cost data from larger plants that sell it and provide that.
Well, and as of this year, 2015, we can sell our sludge here in Illinois, we don't have to have the Wisconsin farmers hauling the stuff. So I E P A and our, our state is making these things available for us to monetize this sludge and be able to sell it and be able to make a profit for the village. And so that's one of the things that Eric and I are going to be talking about, and we'll bring you back some information about taking the phosphorus from the system and monetizing it and using that to help fund some of the improvements to wastewater treatment. But that's why I say it's.
And the reason why it becomes a costly endeavor is because you have to refine the product more than what it is coming out of digesters, and that's what, that's where the labor comes in, that's where the additional equipment comes in, because selling sludge is different than having an, an actual market. So that's where the cost.
If you were to upgrade the plant, it's not an either-or, it's not if you either upgrade the plant and you lower the percentages, or you upgrade the plant and you sell phosphorus, right? It's, it's not.
They're different systems.
Okay. So is it either or?
You would, you would have to, you would have to add additional processes to, to remove the phosphorus from, from being a component of the sludge that's produced, to refine it, remove it again. So that's where the cost, the production cost comes in.
So, so really, you know, to understand this, you wouldn't put millions of dollars into an upgrade if you were going to harvest phosphate, because you're, you're minimizing the amount of phosphate that comes out at the end, right?
First, you have to remove it from, from the wastewater itself, so you have to remove it with the biological process, but then you also have to refine it after it's removed. So you would pay for the, what we're talking about now for the reduction, and then you would also have to build a refining process.
Oh, so it's almost like going into the river?
Correct.
Basically, it's not, the technology right now does not exist where you pull it directly out of the waste, out of the wastewater. It's got, you got to pull out the sludge, and then you got to pull it out from the sludge. So it's not like you can skip a step, you just got to add a step at the end.
Even worse, you remove it and then you're done, or you remove it and you process it again to, we'll do a separate white paper on that as a side note.
Just as, just as, to put it in perspective a bit, if you were to remove all of the phosphorus on a daily basis from our flow stream, it's probably a hundred pounds total a day. So that's where the economy of scale comes in the mix.
That's right.
Okay. So now we're going to talk about how regionalization is possibly going to impact a wastewater treatment plant. I tried to highlight the purple, sorry if it's hard to see, but basically, these are the, these are the facilities that are going to not have the capacity to be able to handle future flows from Fox River, Fox River Grove. Primary clarifiers will be too small, so I have to add a third primary clarifier. This is the primary F1 pumping station, that's the intermediate pumping station between the processes. That does not have adequate capacity to be able to handle the 9.3 ultimate peak flow when you combine both plant flows. I had this broken island, this is the village's blower building. You'll have to add another blower, at least one blower, possibly two blowers, depending on, on how we, what phosphorous removal technology you guys go with, or you all go with. Sorry, I'm seeing, seeing you guys, and there's gals in the audience. And then you'll have to expand your activated sludge process. Luckily, there's plenty of real estate to be able to do that, so it's doable as far as being able to regionalize, but there is going to be, have to be a, a increase in plant capacity around the year 2022, assuming growth is linear both in Cary and Fox River Grove. And the reason why that, the, so for these two processes here, primary clarifiers and the pumping station, that is a pure too much flow, not enough capacity perspective, as in hydraulically, just cannot push that much flow through them. The erosion tanks and the blower is because you will not have enough activated sludge volume to be able to meet future ammonia limits that, that will be coming in the next five to 10 years. Again, these improvements could be phased in over time. Okay? All right. Now, I'll just go to the fun part. So I'm going to do my best to make it as simple as possible on the financial impacts of regionalization.
Now they're talking, huh?
This is, this is a pretty complex table, I'm going to reveal it in sections to try and explain it as succinctly as possible. I hope everybody can see, if not, if you have to move up or, or whatever, then we can. But basically. I'll do my best to explain it. Basically, what we're showing is if both treatment plants were to remain separated, we're trying to show what the cost would be for Cary, for Fox River Grove, and combined with the two communities would be spending to keep their treatment plant separate. So for Cary, we're looking at near-term projects, that's the equipment replacement projects I talked about, we're talking $5 million. For phosphorous removal, for about $2 million, this is on, about a present worth value, we simplified it a little bit more, but essentially a present worth value. So we're talking $7 million for Village of Cary to meet their near, near-term requirements, and for both phosphorus on a low 1 milligram per liter limit without regionalization. So it's basically money that Cary's going to be spending no matter what. Fox River Grove, I guess I should bring up also, we're talking about $100,000 annually in additional O N M costs associated with these upgrades, okay? Fox River Grove, we're talking $11.4 million for a new treatment plant for them.
On their own.
On their own, yeah. An additional $1 million in order to remove phosphorus. So total, it's going to cost them about $12.4 million to be able to get into new treatment plant to meet their future regulations and to meet the phosphorus limit they currently have. For Cary, obviously, like Fox River Grove does, does not affect them, so that's why there's my care, so now we've added up all the, added everything on the cost table. They're looking at around $600,000 in annual costs.
Why is ours eight?
Ours is, yours is eight because you guys have more flow. Basically, more flow, more processes, more complex, more cost. When you monetize everything on a 20-year present worth basis, basically, basically when you include all annual costs along with the capital cost, it's going to cost Fox River Grove 19.5 million dollars over the 20-year life cycle of the treatment plant to remove phosphorus and meet their future wastewater treatment plant needs. It's going to cost Cary 17.4, that's when you look at the annual costs and the capital costs. For a total of $36.9 million, it would be spent to keep both treatment plants separate by both communities over 20-year life cycle cost, okay? When you look at regionalization, Cary is going to have to increase their wastewater treatment plant, we established that, in 2022. That's going to cost about $8.4 million is what we put in monetary value on that. That's under Fox River Grove's column because you would recoup that money as part of your connection fee in which you charge them on a monthly basis to send the flow to you guys, to you gals and guys, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to offend anybody. On top of that, Fox River Grove, right where they connect, Cary can charge them $1 million to purchase the existing capacity that Cary has in their treatment plant already built up based on the fact that you guys made, didn't upgrade back in 2005. So there's still a dollar value, there's still value to your wastewater treatment plant that Fox River Grove would have to buy into, that's about a million dollars. We have negative $1 million for Cary because that's income from Fox River Grove, you guys, you guys, you guys and gals. On top of that, the flow would need to be pumped from Fox River Grove to Cary, the new treatment, a new pump station, and a new flow stream. So there's $4.8 million in that, for that line item for, for Fox River Grove. Phosphorous removal, you'll see that the cost of phosphorous removal goes up a little bit because we've got obviously higher flows, but we, but that would be split between Cary and Fox River Grove, Fox River Grove proportionally to loan. Fox River Grove would be responsible for 0.9 million, Cary would be responsible for 1.6 million, for a total of 2.5.
Under the assumption.
Under the, right, right. These are all theoretical preliminary numbers, you know, pretty big planning numbers. And then the near-term projects that are required would then also be split between Cary and Fox River Grove. Annual costs would then also be split proportionally to Cary and Fox River Grove. So when everything is said and done, regionalization would essentially cost Fox River Grove 23.5 million dollars, it would cost Cary 14.6 million for a total of 38.1 million. So regionalization as a whole would cost total 1.2 million dollars more for both communities. However, it would save Cary 2.7 million in this scenario, and it would cost Fox River Grove a little bit more, $4 million. Now, one Cary act that I want to throw out there, this cost does not include land acquisition. Where they are at, their current wastewater treatment plant facility is not expandable. They are completely landlocked, and the processes they have onsite are not easily adaptable to phosphorous removal or ammonia removal. So, so I would almost guarantee if they kept their treatment plant, they'd have to build it offsite. So that need, we couldn't even, we didn't even, we didn't even guess what that additional cost would be, so obviously, the more expensive the land is, the more attractive it becomes for Fox River Grove going forward. As we look at lower phosphorus limits, it gets even more attractive for everybody. I'm showing the exact same concept, but we're meeting now a 0.5 limit instead of a 1 limit. When you get down to there, now it's costing Fox River Grove an additional 3.2, it's saving Cary 3.2 for a total breakeven. So 0.5, basically, you're spending as much whether you are separate or together, as both communities together. And then as you get down to 0.1, it gets even more attractive for both Cary, Fox River Grove, and then the total would be cheaper to regionalize than for it to do another.
But if the deal was structured 1.0, you know, and the other 0.5, 0.1 scenarios we looked at, that becomes our problem at that point, unless we structure a deal where there's reopeners when the I E P A changes standards for the plan.
Correct. Now, I know that we have helped communities with those intergovernmental agreements, we are semi-familiar with them, and reopeners is not all that uncommon as we talked about in the meeting. So having reopener in there probably is not going to be that much of a stretch to be able to, but that would give Cary the ability to charge more to Fox River Grove to pay for a future upgrade.
And previously, in discussion, questions came up and were clear that the I E P A has loan programs for plant improvements, I mean, they're pretty prevalent with use by municipalities, but you indicated, I believe, that they typically have not had a past practice of providing state grants for plant consolidations, is that correct?
As far as I know, I'm not too familiar with that, but I also have not, in my seven year career at Strain, I have not come across a plant consolidation project like this, so I don't know, there might be an appetite for it.
And help us as a group to understand, suffer from cost, what would be in the state's interest to have one plant instead of two?
Well, the state's interest would be the less wastewater discharges they've got. In theory, the less wastewater is going out to the river, there's less discharges for them to regulate, things like that.
What about the Fox River Study Group or any plants that are south of us? Is there any, what's the benefit to them if there's one less plant and one modernized plant instead of two that aren't?
Well, obviously, folks downstream are affected by everybody upstream, so it would make their life easier, especially, the perfect scenario would be future ammonia limits. You can get site-specific ammonia limits based on the conditions of the river edge reflect one, so obviously, if you guys are improving conditions upstream, you're benefiting everybody downstream for their limited development if you do some of their current development. There's definitely an incentive, or there's definitely, everybody would welcome it from an environmental perspective. I mean, could reduce it two plants down to one, modernize plant, I mean, I would, I would say nobody, nobody would say, well, that's not good for the environment.
Is there possibility for any federal money through U S C P A or you don't know?
That, I, I, I couldn't speak to that. I know, I will tell you this, one funding source that's, that's kind of out there that's become available is possibly getting grants through the U S Department of Agriculture. I'm not sure what the mechanism or how you get your hands on those monies, but I know it's out there.
Well, you could presume that it's all capital grants, if there are any at all, to shave down the theoretical cost to do it right once and Gary, if that's determined to be right.
Now, one thing that I'm going to, part of kind of our, our curriculum with you, with the villages, to look at kind of fiscal impact analysis on what all this possibly means, and that's going to be done by our finance group at the other stream, and so we actually have, John Savage has been in municipal funding for 30 years, and he's pretty creative when he looks at freeing up money for, for folks, whether it's looking at your current bonds and debt and things like that, and freeing up money somehow that way, but also, he's on top of what funding is available, whether it's grants or federal funding sources and things like that, so he'll be able to point us in the direction of what money may possibly be available as well.
Chris, do we have any data on the water treatment plant now?
Wastewater plant? Ah, yes.
Is that like 1.2 million?
We got on the schedule.
I gave, I gave the information from Eric a few weeks ago.
I didn't look at it, it's super close.
We can pull that down.
I hate to interrupt here, but I'd feel like to do it back.
Yeah.
I don't know if this is.
Sure.
Or, is this, why isn't somebody from Fox River Grove here, and are they, have they actually approached us?
Sure, I can ask, I can answer that. Yeah. Yes, I mean, about a year ago, before we did our study, which we had to do anyways, Representative Village approached me and said that they'd like to conceptually think about it. And I looked at it from the standpoint, we already had a study to do and it seemed logical, get the question answered, and the board agreed and said, yeah, go ahead, Ed, it is an alternate to the job. And we'll look at it. The reason they're not here is because this first has to go through this body first before there's any level of discussion. And, I mean, all is collected there, they understand the numbers. And, but first, you know, it doesn't make fiscal sense separate from, you know, common sense, I guess. And so, yeah, that did occur and that's why we did this component. But, you know, it's solely up to you, it's your plan. And it doesn't appear that there's any logical scenario to go the other way to the, to Fox River Grove. So it's simply a question of, would we want to take them on? Does it make any fiscal sense for our rate pairs and residents? So, I mean, that's the bottom line.
And basically, a lot of these numbers are just conjecture?
Well, I mean,
They were conjecture with the knowledge that, the best knowledge that we've got, especially when it comes to, I mean, when it comes to wastewater treatment plant upgrades and phosphorus removal, we've got a pretty good idea of what it takes on a planning level per NGD basis, things like that. So, while these numbers are speculative, they were based on past historical knowledge. And also, I guess I will throw out there that Baxter Woodman is the Fox River Grove's engineering consultant. They kind of put together back in the end of the calculation about two or three years ago that kind of laid out what it would take to, or what it would cost to expand their treatment plant or get a new treatment plant, is actually what they, what they looked at, new treatment plant. And also a new pumping station to pump from Fox River Grove to Cary. And so, we were able to compare our numbers to theirs and they were pretty close.
Yeah, that was, I've seen that report. It was about a two to three-page memo. And it was part of the basis of why I thought at least it made sense to look at it at a high level. It also made sense to bring in a consultant that had not been a part of those discussions in the past on behalf of Cary or Fox River Grove, so that's why Strand is here. But we want to, you know, kind of understand it further.
You know, something that just, I'm curious if you can address this. Fox River Grove doesn't have a lot of options personally, right? So, I mean, I've seen in the past that when you don't have a lot of options, the government gives you a little leeway. Do they have any leverage here to say, look, I, we don't have the land, we can't do this stuff, what do we do?
I have not been, you know, I'm not privy to their conversation with the IPA. What I will say is the fact that they're in the Fox River Study Group, not, nobody's really got many options, I mean, ever. The IPA's view of the Fox River Study Group is you're all in this together, you all basically have, you're in the same boat. And so, I don't necessarily have the feeling that they'd be able to negotiate anything different than what you guys are dealing with.
They wouldn't, I mean, they wouldn't have the ability to, you know, get a like a five-year moratorium on them meeting the standards or anything.
I doubt it.
As well, from what I understand, they've already been issued, and they have the same ones as we have, and the same feasibility, something that they have to do.
Just at a high level, do we have any knowledge of comparison rates in the Village of Fox River Grove versus the Village Cary, just at a high level, quickly?
I wish I had that off the top of my head, I have that information, I know I looked at it and they are slightly lower.
Okay.
I think our residents.
Okay, so I mean, it ultimately comes down to, these are numbers, but they're negotiable. And how, how much would the Village of Fox River Grove want to get out of the business? And yet, and yes, we would absolutely pursue collectively state, federal grants, no promises. But would that have some upside to that possibly? And we'd have to do that homework in the next phase of this study to see if we can get an audience. But it would come down to how, how, you know, how tough a situation is it for, from a land standpoint? Does a town of 4,500, 5,000 residents want a wastewater plant that has to be rebuilt? Those kind of issues, you know, seem to be interesting aspects of negotiation. And, I mean, certainly, the village over time is, you know, to the extent possible, understands the concept of consolidating government when, when possible. And the logic in having two plants, you know, other side of the river, from a, you know, collective standpoint, doesn't make a lot of sense, so.
When there's a mandate out like this, because this would be a mandate, right? We have to meet certain, do you have to go out to referendum?
For what?
To, for, we're gonna have to borrow money, I would assume, so do you have to go out for?
Do you have to look at the financial aspects of it? Obviously, if it's a much bigger job, consolidation, we have to look at all those things. But, I mean, certainly, as you recall, we've done a rate study for a water insurer when I got here to get the baseline set and help us free up some dollars for neighborhood projects, which we've been doing. We're due to do that again probably the next six to 12 months to have a refresh on the trilogy study. And, I mean, certainly, that's part why this is here now, helps us to see on the wastewater side, separate from the water side, what kind of capital costs we got coming down the pike, you know, so that we can plan for that from a rate standpoint as well.
Do these guys know where we were before and what the results of that study were?
At a high level, there was some concern just about the, the rate model that we did have in place as opposed to keeping up with the capital requirements, et cetera. That's why we brought in some outside assistance to look at it fresh and create the goal of a five-year rate. We wanted to try and keep rates flat in terms of the increase rather than have it be variable like this every year, which many communities do. We completed the study, decided to do the capital investment with cash as opposed to bonds. Found that we had decent cash, cash balance, we did those projects, we painted a water tower, you know, some other, primarily water projects, and we had about, went on a follow-up. It's that 3% increase per year for a five-year basis. And the study showed us that that will be acceptable. Some of the components we need to keep in mind on the water side is that low-flow technology in homes has reduced water use, those sorts of things, as well as conservation. So the sales of water were somewhat variable, and that's part why we did that five-year study. But when we had capital costs like this that come in on the sewer side, you know, we're gonna have to start thinking about how that pans out for rates. Because typically municipalities don't like to have huge swings in rates. But, you know, capital projects sometimes cause that. So, if you want to get on to the next slide, so we stay on time.
Well, the next slide is my last slide, I just wanted to leave you guys with some takeaway messages. Obviously, we still have some work to do on our end. Like I said, everything's preliminary at this point. I think we've got pretty good ideas as far as what our recommendation is going to be from a big-picture perspective, if we want to refine our costs, look at, look at how things are going to affect you all financially. And then wrap up, wrap up the study. As Eric mentioned, and I had mentioned earlier, with the USCPA meeting with Fox River Study Group, I think once that meeting happens, we'll have some clarity to make sure that we feel confident that limits aren't going to change in the too-near future, and then we can get everything finalized. I think we're planning to have one more sit-down, Strand and, and the village, probably end of January, maybe in February, maybe we'll wait till after the USCPA meeting, we'll be in one more sit-down with you all. And then we also had in the budget, or in our project scope, one more discussion here at the board level as well, whether it's to present the final study or one final presentation to make sure you guys are on board with what recommendations are to, before we wrap things up in April.
Yeah, I think the goal would be, by, we're typically doing our CIP for approval in March, so we'll spend some time over the winter trying to refine this, of course. I'd like to try to target a decision on this biological versus chemical approach for the Cary alone project. It sounded like we had some headway on that tonight, but we can bring that back to committee and then can have a follow-up dialogue, because that's big on our end. And refine the equipment replacement improvements from a standpoint of a multi-year plan or one that we tee up in the schedules, are important regardless. So we'll do that. And then, I think lastly, do you want me to continue? I mean, we obviously still have some engagement with the firm to do some homework. And I'm not requesting negotiating authority to sit down with Fox River Grove at this point necessarily. But, I mean, there's some homework that could be done in the background about some of the capital costs. But I thought it was important, because I know I've already talked to a number of trustees and there's about three different philosophies on this board of even being open to regionalization, and that's fine, it's logical. Did you want to talk about that for five, 10 minutes, Ken? Do I?
It's fine, I mean, if you want to talk about it, let's talk about it. Yeah, I like, I mean, the numbers I'm looking at, I mean, this is my first exploration, I like to digest it.
Yeah, sure.
It sounds like there's a huge range of dollar figures here. And we can go from spending a little bit of money and keeping our own plant for the next 20 years.
Why don't we come back and talk about this at another time?
Sure.
Let them, let Justin, we can, this is a more scenario, there's a lot of information.
No, I, I'm not asking about mathematical numbers at this point. I mean, I'm talking concepts, just in terms of.
Reopening and reorganization.
Yeah, because conceptually, I mean, if we just don't want to do that, it makes no sense to, you know, do math, I mean, honestly, other than our.
I saw the numbers helping with more regionalization. That's what I look at, when I saw those numbers, it's like, if it was just, if it makes sense to explore it, the cost saving is huge.
I would, I'm very open to exploring, I think that it's, it would be who most, it would be being good stewards of both communities. Looking at where, you know, where we're at, curious, will it be done for the possibly Cary residents? And I don't know, the numbers are still, you know, fluid, it's just that it's not for sure. But I, I think that it would definitely be who us to look at doing that for many reasons.
Thank you. I'm not against it, but I do have concerns, because I'm a dollar guy and I want to see the numbers, you know? I don't think they're, it's a narrow that I'm looking for.
I understand. I understand that. Yeah, I mean, that's what we'll do, I mean, I'm not, I'm not asking for it nor will I, you know, go into rate negotiation with Fox River Grove at this point. There was some suggestion of that way early and I said, wait a minute, first, let's understand philosophy, second, let's understand concepts, and third, then we can talk about whether, you know, there's, there's any deal terms that should be discussed. But there is some refinement that will, you know, kind of laser in on now. And there seems to be potentially some fiscal value to us and conceptually it makes sense. But absolutely, I mean, we, our occupation is our utility rate pairs for our residents, so to the extent that there's some options, we'll look at them. I'll do some homework on concepts on grants. I mean, I think that's a huge part of the capital bill, separate from what we understand to be the IPA, you know, loan terms for municipalities, other caps on the total capital spend, one of the payback terms, how many years, those kind of things, I mean, you need that, somebody need that. And then lastly, just wanted to point out, there's also different ways to structure consolidation. The greatest example, easiest example I can provide is Lombardi Go On. They have actually an authority where the two communities are together on their plant. And it's basically a board that has representation from both municipalities upon it. I'm not advocating for that per se, but you get into governance questions when you start talking about having a shared facility. And I don't know that there's any perfect way, but there's just many models by which communities come together and try to consolidate resources to get better economies of scale. So.
Chris, do we process for Chalk Valley too? Do they, are there? So, Bill, right now, just straight to Cary?
However, Fox River Grove, that isn't the case. They have a hospital.
Hospital.
And they have like partly Barrington, if not all of it. So they have a customer, they have some customer, because the hospital is huge in terms of drop. You need to understand that.
The other thing that I will throw in, that Fox River Grove does have is they bring in all the waste from such a tallers, so that would be something to look into. If you guys, if you will decide to regionalize, it would make sense to bring that in because that is a significant source of dollars for them.
And that is something that has a whole spectrum of safety and access, things that have to get dealt with. We looked at it at a high level a couple of years ago. And I agree, I mean, in a big project, you look at those things, but there's some ups and downsides. We've taken that on, so we have to look at those things. Okay, that's all I needed.
Good. Is there any future agenda items in discussion by the load board? Okay, I'll adjourn motion to adjourn. All favor.
Aye.
Close.
Thanks everyone for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike.
I appreciate everybody's attention.